February 10th, 2020. We have some great presentations this evening. But before we get to that, I'm going to have Councilman Robertson recognize our scout troop who is here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to recognize the Boy Scouts that were with us this evening. You want to stand up so we can recognize you. This is Troop 1001 from Blue Ridge Community of Christ, and I assume some of you are working on a mayor badge, right? What mayor badges are you working on?
Communication.
Communication. Very good. And is this your first time with us?
Yes.
Yeah, well, welcome. We're glad to have you at one of our city council meetings. Welcome to invite you to come back and be at some of the other council meetings. I'm an Eagle Scout. I've gone through the scouting program. I know there's other scouts here in the audience. Anybody that's involved with scouts, stand up.
Stand up.
Stand up.
All you scouts.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you. We're glad to have you here. Feel free afterwards if you want to come up and ask some of the council members or the mayor some questions afterwards, and we'll be happy to visit with you or visit with some of the other folks here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, our first presentation this evening is National League of Cities Regional Housing Summit Report Review. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As the mayor indicated, tonight, all four of our presentations do relate to the topic of housing, which is, of course, a key part of our strategic plan. It's a multifaceted and complex issue. Tonight, we're just going to really scrape the surface on it, but it's my hope that this is an item that moves to the forefront of our conversation here at City Hall and one that we begin to make a priority over the next several years. So with that, tonight's first presentation is a summary of the regional housing report that was prepared by the Mid-America Regional Council. Here to present it is Ms. Lauren Palmer.
Hello.
Hello.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Lauren Palmer, Director of Local Government Services for the Mid-America Regional Council. It's a pleasure to be back in Independence and appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight an overview of the First Suburbs Coalition Regional Housing Report. So, the regional housing study was a project of Mark's First Suburbs Coalition, and if you're not familiar with that group, it was formed in 2002. The First Suburbs Coalition represents inner-ring suburbs in the Kansas City region that are predominantly landlocked or have aging housing stock that was developed after World War II. The coalition is comprised of elected officials, local government staff, and private sector partners, and over the years, this group has worked on areas of common interest, including communities for all ages, housing rehabilitation, and energy efficiency. You will notice in the map that I put on the screen that it includes only portions of certain communities, including Independence. This is because the way that Mark designates inner-ring suburbs, they really look at the age and the housing stock, and so they've included just that portion of Western Independence in the official designation of the first ring suburbs. But this definition is really fluid. In fact, on this housing report, and over the last year, we have a lot of communities that are outside of that first-tier ring that really identify with this work and the issues and have sort of self-selected to engage in this process. So, communities that you don't see on this map, like Lee Summit, Ray Moore, Excelsior Springs in Missouri, were all part of this housing study. So, I just want to make mention of that. I will do my best tonight to let you know when information that I'm giving you is for the community as a whole, or when it's really focused on just that Western Independence portion. Okay, so last year, the First Suburbs Coalition decided to dedicate its entire 2019 programming year to issues around housing, and that turned out to be fortunate timing when the National League of Cities announced its first-ever economic development pilot project for first-tier suburbs. We filed an application on behalf of the First Suburbs Coalition with 17 sponsoring communities, including Independence, so I wanted to recognize and thank you for your leadership and your sponsorship of that project. The work involved the study, which we'll review tonight, but it culminated in this regional housing summit that we held last July, and the purpose of that summit was to bring together local leaders like yourself to focus on understanding issues of housing affordability and economic development challenges in those first-tier suburbs, and to try to identify opportunities to build and maintain workforce housing and best-practice solutions for regional implementation. So I just want to start by talking a little bit about terminology. The report makes this important distinction between workforce and affordable housing. Workforce housing is affordable to people earning between 60 and 120 percent of the area median income. Affordable housing, in contrast, is designed is defined by how much a household spends on housing, and the federal government defines that threshold as 30 percent or less of a household's income spent on housing. So I just mentioned that because you may hear talk of a housing spectrum. There's a tremendous amount of good work happening in our region on issues of homelessness, issues of veterans' housing, but this study and this report was really focused on what we classified as workforce housing. And again, this was an economic development pilot project, so we really thought about it in terms of economic development. When you think about in our community region, in our community positions like nurses, and police officers, and childcare workers, retail workers, many other critical job functions, these are the income levels that we're talking about when we say workforce housing, and it's really the study was focused on answering that question of who will meet those needs in our community if workers can't find adequate housing. Okay, so before we had that housing summit last summer, we did this non-scientific survey of the membership of the First Suburbs Coalition, got a pretty good response rate of over 100 responses, and we were, I don't know if we were surprised, but it did validate the importance of housing as a regional issue. The survey also indicated that the top two barriers to expanding workforce housing are the high cost of infill redevelopment, and also concerns of negative impacts on community character. So you will see that the recommendations in the study kind of tie back to those two barriers that were identified. All right, our consulting partner on this project was a company called TIP Strategies. They're an economic development consulting firm with offices in Seattle and Austin. And again, I mentioned that National League of Cities pilot project that we won. The award involved technical assistance from TIP Strategies, so it was really tremendous free-of-charge. They came in and did all of the analytical work for us. But they really started with approaching this study by looking through the lens of national trends around housing, and identified that incomes are not increasing as quickly as housing costs nationwide. Nearly a third of all U.S. households pay housing costs that are above that 30 percent affordability threshold, and most Americans live in suburbs, and this is true in the Kansas City region as well, and that our suburban areas are growing the most in our Kansas City region. And those suburban growth rates are outpacing large cities. So again, it's just an indicator that suburban communities have a large role to play in these housing issues. All right, so this map is kind of a key summary and takeaway of the entire study. This map shows a simple coloration of affordable, single-family housing units in the entire study area, so the 17 communities and the first-tier suburbs that we looked at. This map is intended to answer the question, where can the median worker feasibly afford a mortgage in our region? The green areas on the map indicate areas of affordability, and the pink or salmon-colored areas indicate those areas that are not affordable to a median wage earner. So, I have kind of three takeaways from this map. The first, I think this map is telling us a story that Kansas City is not facing a housing crisis like some other communities around the country. Kansas City is not in Austin, or Seattle, or in Atlanta. We certainly have our housing challenges, and I don't mean to downplay that, but I think it's hyperbolic to say that our region is in a crisis. In fact, as part of the study, we talked to staff at the Kansas City Area Development Council, and they cite Kansas City's affordability as a competitive advantage in business and talent recruitment. So I think Kansas City has an opportunity to be proactive and get out ahead of a lot of the really major challenges that other urban areas in the country have dealt with. This map also tells us that challenges are very diverse across the region. You really see strong concentrations of either the green or the pink coloring, and that divide is very prominent across the state line as well. And then finally, this study can give you a lot of information about affordability, but the information in this report is completely silent on issues of quality and livability. So, we can talk a lot about where it's affordable to live, but this study doesn't answer the question about whether or not those pockets of affordable housing are safe, if they're accessible to jobs, if they're accessible to transit, if they're adequate in terms of the size and the style of the property meeting the needs of the families who are looking for that type, those housing. So, that's kind of a whole nother layer of analysis that we are really challenging the communities that were involved in this study to start working on in their local communities of kind of digging down to that next layer of analysis and doing your own housing studies to identify what are really those next gaps and challenges beyond just affordability. All right, a key theme from this summit was understanding that across the region, there are these diverse housing challenges, and that the solutions to those challenges will be localized. So, TIP evaluated the participating suburban communities based on these community characteristics of income, home value, rent, and vacancy rates. And these characteristics were chosen specifically as factors that most influence access to workforce housing. And as I go through this, I'm going to highlight where Independence landed across these four characteristics, and this information all came from census data. So the information that you're seeing here is for the community citywide, not just that pocket in Western Independence. Okay, so for median household income, I don't think this will come as new information to you. Independence is in the lower third of its regional peers in Kansas City for median household income. I know that this is a key goal that you have identified in the Independence for All Strategic Plan. I will note here that all of the numbers in this study are based on the American Community Survey five-year average from 2013 to 2017. So if this number looks a little low to you, the 2018 data has just recently been released, and I know this number has ticked up for Independence and probably some other communities in the study area, but we looked at that five-year average through 2017. And then median home value, again, Independence is in the lower third of its regional peers for home values, but those home value costs are rising. And our research services staff at Mark did a little deeper analysis on this and looked at the trend of home values over time. So, this is analysis that we did that, switching back now, is limited to Western Independence. This is focused on those five ZIP codes that we classify as Western Independence, so it's 64050, 5253, 54, and 55, which does capture a little portion of Sugar Creek as well. But when you look at this, you can see that Western Independence is below both the Kansas City region and Jackson County, and you can kind of see where that trend ticked down after the recession in 2008, but Independence is taking advantage of the regional trend, and these home values are starting to tick back up. I thought this slide was interesting because it really paints the picture that even within a subset of a city, Western Independence, even within that, there's really wide diversity of how these housing issues play out. We see a lot of variety here within those five ZIP codes in Western Independence. So, looking at this chart, you know, that bright blue line is the Western Independence average, but you can see the 64055 ZIP code is really pulling that average up as compared to the 64053 and the 64054 ZIP code. So, I just mentioned that to show the power of drilling down on this data, that even within a single community, there's a lot of variety happening, and it has implications for you and how you think about housing policies that might address issues. And I know that this council has been thoughtful and strategic, specifically with your 353 tax abatement program, really being thoughtful about the areas where you're utilizing incentives that are targeted to meet the specific needs in that area. So, I'm just kind of acknowledging that and applauding you for it, and really saying that these issues are tricky and have to be looked at, even at a more micro level than citywide. Okay, and then if we go back to those four categories, the third category is rental costs. Again, Independence has pretty competitive rental costs compared to the rest of the region. And housing availability, Independence is hovering at about a 10 percent vacancy rate, which is just right there with the regional average at 9 percent, a little below the national average at 12 percent. Not a huge range in this vacancy rate across the region, so even though we're kind of on the lower tier there, everyone's kind of hovering at about the same point. All right, so all of that information gets compiled together, and the consultant broke all of the communities in the study up into these five cohorts. They did that intentionally to try to group cities into common themes, and then developed potential actions and implications for each cohort. Again, just acknowledging that these issues are so widely diverse across our region, and they really tried to figure out a way to take a major regional study and give it a more practical implication for the participating communities. So Independence fell into this second cohort, Cohort 2. Cohort 2 is identified as characterized by lower incomes, home values, and rents than the greater Kansas City region. Some potential actions and implications that were identified in the study for Cohort 2. Since median incomes are lower than the region, the consultant suggested a strategy focused on increasing incomes through access to higher-wage jobs. Again, I know through the Independence for All Plan, you've got a strong focus on workforce development, and that's right-aligned with the recommendations in this study. Independence already has a large supply of affordable housing, so continuing to focus on repair and maintenance of the existing housing stock could be a really successful strategy. The tricky part with that is encouraging reinvestment in properties while also managing growth in home values and trying to preserve affordability. And then finally, high vacancy rate really could be an opportunity for Independence. Unlike some of the other communities that were in this second cohort, Independence has reasonably good access to transit, it's centrally located to major job centers, you own your own utility, which potentially opens up some opportunities to look at how you can creatively manage utility costs, which is another major cost factor for housing. So you can really think about a strategy to brand yourself as a community of opportunity in the region where you've got that access to affordability already. Okay, and then just the kind of the final summary in the report, they identified these five strategies, and these are very high-level, but if you read into the report, there are some very specific recommendations behind each of these strategies. I'll highlight just a few. There isn't time tonight to really do a deep dive on this, but I certainly encourage you to take time to thumb through that report and see just really a wealth of information there, and specific case studies from other communities around the region that have successfully implemented some of these strategies. But first, promoting knowledge sharing. I think the consultant was really impressed with the great resource that we have through the Regional Council and the First Suburbs Coalition, and really encouraged cities to continue to try to work together on these complex issues. We at Mark are trying to continue the work that came out of the study by figuring out a way to launch a regional workforce housing awareness campaign. We are partnering with the Johnson County United Community Services on a housing study that they are doing in Johnson County, but we have committed to bringing to bear data from the Missouri side of the state line so that we can leverage some of the work that they're doing in that study to create some resources for communities to have this conversation about workforce housing among their citizens and their communities. We also are really encouraging cities to think about these cohorts. Within your cohort, there's neighboring communities like Sugar Creek and Grandview. You know, you may think about how you could reach out to those communities and really share common ideas and challenges, and think about working across jurisdictional boundaries on some of these solutions. Second, preserve existing housing stock. Again, when you've got a great supply of affordable housing, there's a lot you can do to continue financial assistance to owners for minor home repairs, retrofitting. Independence has made great use of the major federal grant programs around this, home funds, CDBG funds. Within the last five years, 2014 to 2019, Independence has used over $2 million of those federal funds on rehab for 98 units. So just continuing to take advantage of those resources. Increasing the amount of housing that's available. Again, you already have great access to housing, but the report talks about strategies like leveraging partnerships with CDCs or community land trusts to try to get nonprofit or private ownership of properties and convert them for neighborhood use. So really acquiring properties and updating them and retrofitting them to meet specific community needs. Fourth, access to financing. The report talks about homebuyer assistance programs, a dedicated housing fund that might work on some of these strategies. And then opportunity zones. Independence is one of only a handful of communities in this report that has that advantage of having a designated opportunity zone, and really that could be an opportunity to leverage some housing programs. And then finally, enacting regulatory changes. There's just a number of different strategies that you could pursue for using codes to encourage your desired housing outcomes. The report talks about density bonuses, using incentives to encourage diversity of housing types, and using development incentives to reward developers who are doing workforce and affordable housing. But really, the common theme in all of this is just to encourage the communities, to engage your communities and your citizens in setting your housing goals, and then once you've done that process of identifying, you know, really, what do we want out of our housing stock as a community, then you can think about the right strategies and tools to implement to help you achieve those goals. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the study, or any recommendations that you have for me that I can take back to Mark about how we might continue to advance the work from this report.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Can you, I know that this was just a high-level review of the entire report. I assume that that report's available on the Mark website?
Yes.
And then is it also on the National League of Cities? Are they just website as well?
Yes.
Okay, so either one of those, and we can, where's Meg? We can link those from our city social media and website as well, so people can get a little, you know, deeper understanding of this report. I did have a question. If you could go back to the slide that you showed that indicated the surveying that you did and the barriers that people identified there. So, I want to make sure I heard you correctly, is this was, this was a survey of people within the Kansas City MSA. This wasn't a National League of Cities survey that was nationwide. This was specific to the First Suburbs Coalition inside of Kansas City. Is that correct? Do you have, this, you know, is very interesting. I'd be interested in evaluating the importance of each of these seven things that were identified. So does your survey data that you collected give a little bit more, is there a place where there's some more detail about these? I mean, I would like to, for instance, know how big of a barrier number one is compared to number seven. I mean, how many people identified that the high cost of infill redevelopment was the biggest barrier? So, is there more, I mean, I'm sure there is more information, but could we, could you send us some more information about these?
Yes, I can share that with your staff. This, this question in the survey was a ranking. So it gave these seven options, and I think there was an other option.
I got you.
And said, rank these one through seven. So yes, we can share with you.
But it would tell you.
We can quantify how many ranked.
Right. That's what I'm looking for, is like, of the 100 or so respondents, how many identified high cost of infill redevelopment as number one?
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Are there comments or questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to get to it, be number three with the home preservation programs and stuff, but that is high priority in the northwest side of town here, where we have some housing stock, but it also needs some, some of the homes need some serious love, and how do they do that? We have an older community that may or may not have the finances to redo things on their homes, so that's, that's highly important. City Manager and I, a couple of weeks ago, went to go talk to Edgar from the Center Avenue Development Council about how they were doing things in KCK and the development within some of their business communities and also into their neighborhoods. And we, one of our takeaways was, how do we become more inclusive with, with our diversity that we have? And also, how do we make City Hall more friendly on how, when we have people who want to enhance their homes, how can we streamline process, and how do we make it more impactful and efficient when they come here? Because we can talk about all the numbers and everything we want, but once you get down to the ground level at City Hall, then we've got to make those abilities to be streamlined and smooth. So that's something that we've been kicking around and talking about how we do that. So thank you for this information. This will take us a long way to help develop strategies.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is homelessness. If you have a city manager, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Continuing with our housing presentation night, certainly a key part of that when you're discussing housing are issues of homelessness, and that too is a very multifaceted and complex issue, could certainly be a standalone topic for several study sessions. But tonight, have a group here led by our own Doug Cowan from the Community Services League, who's going to give us a little bit of an idea of some of the efforts that are in the community to address this, really, community-wide and nationwide issue. So I will yield to Doug to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, do them all.
There it is.
There it is. First shot. You gotta have the first shot.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and my fellow citizens as well. I'm sorry that I don't get a chance to look at you. My name is Doug Cowan. I'm the president and CEO of Community Services League. We are located just to the north here of City Hall, our main office. We do operate a total of seven locations here in Independence, which is part of our network of 14 locations throughout Jackson and Clay Counties, and I am a lifelong resident of this community as well. This year, 2020, is CSL's 104th year of having a presence here in Independence, and we won't go into all of that. We do a lot of a lot of things. We do workforce development, we do financial coaching, we do basic needs programming, and we do a lot within the housing arena, so we appreciate the opportunity. And while it's still fresh on your brains, I would certainly, just as an introductory statement, suggest that many of the strategies that were outlined in the previous presentation have a direct or indirect correlation with positive efforts to alleviate homelessness in the community. So homelessness as an issue certainly does not exist in a silo. It exists in a broad conversation with housing. So appreciate the opportunity to have that be part of the conversation tonight. I think I will real quickly introduce, we have a team, we're going to do a very kind of quick relay race. I'll ask just very quickly that they raise their hands so that you know when you hear from them. Aaron Crossley with Truman Medical Center, Amber Bauer with Community Services League, Heather Hoffman with the Greater Kansas City Coalition in homelessness, Sarah Townsend with Empower Missouri. You will not hear from Markeia Watson because she has laryngitis, but we're very glad, very glad to have her on our team with us. She is also with the Greater Kansas City Coalition to end homelessness. There are many analogies that we could use to describe homelessness. Let me see here. Okay. There are many analogies we could use to describe homelessness. I think what's most succinct for tonight is the well-used analogy about an iceberg. We all know that what we can see of an iceberg is just the top part. Same with homelessness. When we celebrate in our community someone getting rehoused after a bout of homelessness, we only see the excitement, the good news, the top of the iceberg. We don't see the coordinated efforts of citizens, city staff, law enforcement, social services, landlords, and many others that make rehousing possible. Likewise, when someone goes from permanent housing to the streets, we only see that person as homeless, and we don't often see the rest of the story that is beneath the surface. And because I think stories help to illustrate our coordinated efforts, wanted to share one as a chance to begin our discussion about this. And this is a very true story about one of our neighbors. I do believe that everybody is entitled to their privacy, so for the purpose of this story, I'll call this woman Mary. Mary is in her mid-60s and has lived in Independence for a long time. From at least 2015 to 2019, she was on the street homeless in our community. Prior to that, she was doubled up, what we would call couch surfing or doubled up, which is barely maintaining staple housing. Like many people on the street, she did have some income that was coming in. Mary particularly had social security income while she was on the streets. Our connection with Mary began in 2017, over Labor Day weekend, of course, as we call it here, Santa Calagon weekend. She was staying on the front porch of the old Speaks Chapel that is, shares a parking lot with the Community of Christ Auditorium. That is where Lexington turns into Chrysler, Lexington, and Walnut. And the Chamber of Commerce uses that during Santa Calagon as a place to park cars and do things associated with the festival, and she was sleeping in the parking lot, and so rightly, they were concerned, and they called down to Community Services League to see if, if we could do something. called down to Community Services League to see if, if we could do something. And that began our outreach with Mary. We were not immediately able to move her into permanent housing, but we were able to briefly assist her to make sure she was out of harms way with big crowds and all the cars coming through the parking lot for that weekend. Over the next couple of years, we had many outreach attempts. Independence Police were part of our outreach attempts with Mary. Unfortunately, many of the folks that are homeless in our society are very distrustful for many reasons of institutions, and that could be city government, police departments, social service agencies, mental health providers. There tends to be a lack of trust for many particular reasons. But she was back again in the same spot this fall, just six months ago in fall 2019. That office is now occupied by Habitat for Humanity. And our friends at Habitat for Humanity said, can we come together and, and really put a coordinated effort on what we can do for Mary? And thankfully, Mary, for whatever reason this time, finally opened up to a woman working at Habitat for Humanity, shared some of the details. Even though Mary's in her mid-60s, her mom is still alive in a nursing home, and that was important because we were able to make contact with Mary's mother, because Mary actually wouldn't even share her real name with us. We didn't know, importantly, when we are out doing outreach, we try to gather information like social security numbers, so we can do research on folks, so we can figure out, do they have evictions? What are the barriers to housing? That type of data gathering is critical in our outreach efforts. So we got ahold of her mom in the nursing home, we got her full name, her social security number, her date of birth, and we could look her up, and we actually applied for housing on Mary's behalf. Sometime in between housing, she ended up at the emergency room here in Independence due to continued exposure to the elements. She was scheduled to be released with nowhere to go, but we were aware that we, the housing that we had applied for was coming through, and so we were able to coordinate with our friends at Hope House. Even though Hope House is a domestic violence shelter, they had a weekend bed available, and we were able to get Mary situated, because we had got a call from the Independence Housing Authority that a unit at Hocker Heights would be available for Mary. Like many homeless folks, the animals that Mary had with her were a big barrier to getting housing. She had a cat, and many times, we were able to offer her some type of housing arrangement, but B, she did not want to be parted from her cat. And so we were able to work and get a release letter through the Independence Housing Authority so that she could move in with her cat and one of the local animal hospitals paid to get it vaccinated to become compliant with HUD standards, which the Independence Housing Authority, of course, follows. So the good news is, after four years, we got Mary finally stably housed, and I am certainly pleased to tell you that six months later, she is there. We paid her utility deposit to the Housing Authority so that she could move in. She did have money from her check to pay her rent deposit. Habitat for Humanity and CSL co-furnished her apartment. And what probably made this easy, and I actually, I tell you, this was one of our easier cases, a four-year case that was one of our easiest, because she didn't have eviction. So many of our folks have evictions on their records, and all of a sudden, it becomes very difficult to place them into permanent housing, even though that may be their desire. So I hope that that very brief story kind of encapsulates some of the challenges that we work through in our outreach and trying to move folks from homeless to stably housed. In the brief time that we have tonight, we may be able to delve into every issue around homelessness in Independence. However, we want to help you understand that coordinated work is going on here in Independence and throughout Jackson and Wyandotte Counties. We're going to help, give you very quickly a boots-on-the-ground perspective. We're going to spend just a few minutes talking about some of the costs that are associated with homelessness. In some ways, this council, through specific policies, could look at ways to help ease homelessness in our community. I think it's very critical that when we look at this issue, we look at two things. We look at the folks that are on the street homeless, and how do we care for them? But let's also look at the folks that are stably housed. You're going to hear some staggering statistics about the number of folks that are on the street that just recently had been permanently housed. And so we also have to figure out, at the same time, how do we care for those folks on the streets? But how do we stop folks moving from permanent housing onto the streets? So there are really two issues in the same conversation. As part of my remarks, though, I would be remiss not to thank the city for dedicating resources to assist our coordinated efforts, specifically our outreach efforts throughout parts of Independence, most of which are not accessible by automobile. They would not be possible without the Independence Police Department, especially Officers McLaughlin and Groom. In just a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Amber Bauer, who is CSL's Vice President of Housing Services. Just very quickly, as, I'll ask her to make her way up here, to level set with you about what CSL does for housing. We've been very involved in housing the formerly homeless, as I talk about. We currently house 108 people that were formerly chronically homeless. About 20% of our housing is done right here in Independence. By HUD's coordinated entry standards, we must serve families throughout our Jackson and Wyandotte County region, so not just here in Independence, which, if you're wondering why only 20% of our folks are housed here. We house families on what's called a scattered site model, meaning that we hold the leases to about 50 units that house those 108 people. And this is what is referred to commonly as HUD homeless housing. This is different than HUD rental assistance, commonly referred to as public housing or Section 8, which is another story, another conversation for a different evening. Beyond that, CSL does a lot within housing, as we are a HUD-certified housing counseling agency. We offer rent and utility assistance, homebuyer education classes, asset development funds to save for homeownership, credit repair to improve your status as a renter or buyer. We help folks find units in their price range. We provide resident services for those living in public housing, tenant landlord mediation, street outreach for those that are homeless, and I'm sure there are other things that we do that I failed to mention. But at this time, to give you a quick boots-on-the-ground perspective about what that outreach looks like among our homeless population, I will turn it over to my colleague Amber Bauer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. So I'm coming at you guys from the boots-on-the-ground perspective. So I am the individual from CSL and within our city that goes out with IPD to the actual camps. Without the partnership with IPD, it would not have grown to the great efforts that we have right now. Over the past year, Officer McLaughlin and Grooms have really taken that effort to the next step, just from when it comes to a safety standpoint. Our city manager, Mr. Walker, got to experience an excursion a couple of months ago, and it really puts into perspective some of the barriers that our folks are facing. I'm going to highlight a few of those. Doug touched on the story of Mary and how it's really about relationship building and engagement. That takes time. A lot of our folks are so transient in our city because of the limited spaces that they can camp or that aren't MOU'd and that they're able to stay at. It really makes it a challenge to coordinate and get them to set up with services that they need to better their situation. So that takes time. Just human connection, it's all human-centered. It's really getting to know them, getting to know their names, getting to know their true story, and not just automatically assuming it's due to mental health. It's due to substance abuse. It's due to poor judgment in life. We've all made those, those mistakes, but getting from ground zero back up is where we really need to focus those efforts. Substance abuse and mental health are two key components that I think we are lacking resources in our city. We need a better partnership with our local community health agency, but what we do have a great partnership with is with Truman Medical Center. We take a lot of our folks down to what's called their assertive community outreach center. So myself and McLaughlin, Jody, if we see an individual that's actually ready to engage in services, which in time, that does happen, we take them down there because access to services is immediate. They have one building, and it's all under one roof. They can get assigned a case manager, they can get assigned medical treatment, they can get assigned mental health treatment, all under one, all under one roof and within a three to six-week timeframe, which is quick. But it's transportation that's the barrier. But if we had that service within our local community mental health provider, we could potentially get our folks being seen quicker, which would get some of those bottom-line barriers addressed sooner. So partnership with comprehensive is huge, which we're getting there. It just takes time. Also, access just to medical care in general. Most of our folks are uninsured due to Medicaid and the lack of the accessibility of it. So a lot of our folks are taken down to Truman. We get the gold card, and they do have access to medical care and are seen, and some of those issues are addressed. Where am I going next? So the local point-in-time count, which was through Jackson County, which happened on the 23rd and 24th of January, happens yearly through HUD. This year, we did see an increase of our street homeless. Those numbers right now are preliminarily out, but I would say we saw a very huge spike in the numbers of folks that we surveyed in Independence. And I think what I took from my experience doing that this year was, there was a new question asked, like, where was the last stable housing zip code? 90% of our folks came from our community. Most of them came from the 64050 zip code and the 64052 zip code. That tells a story. These are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are people that have roots here, and they're going to stay here. So how do we get them connected and back into housing instead of living in the elements? So I think once those numbers come out, that's going to be very telling of who we're seeing on the streets. I will just say, being out there and visiting with our neighbors and seeing their stories and seeing what they're really trying to do and overcome is what impacts me the most and what makes me love and want to continue to outreach them. But we need more people. We need more boots on the grounds. Matt and Jody cannot do it alone. CSL cannot do it alone. It takes a team, it takes a village to get these people back connected to the services and the housing that they deserve. So that is what I want our city to take a look at, to how we can coordinate better as one and get these folks to where they need to be.
Good evening, Madam Ma'am and Madam Mayor and councilpersons. All right. I am Heather Hoffman. I am the Executive Director of the Greater Kansas City Coalition in Homelessness. I greatly thank you taking the time to, to listen to our smorgasbord of, of folks here to kind of talk to you about the different layers, as Amber and Doug, I think, both mentioned, the kind of different pieces of complexity that, that go into homelessness. So at Greater Kansas City Coalition in Homelessness, we are what is known as the COC Lead Agency or the Continuum of Care Lead Agency. So our agency, one of our primary roles is to help, is to help maintain HUD funding for the various programs in our community and our continuum of care. For us, that includes Jackson County and Wyandotte County. We are a by-state continuum of care. So our, one of our primary functions is to maintain around $13.9 million of funding that comes in from HUD into the various programs. There's around 40 programs in our continuum that use that funding to, to help battle homelessness in our community. So one of the things that our agency really kind of helps our communities with and helps these agencies with is data. So Amber and Doug are able to, to really speak around kind of that boots-on-the-ground and, and talk about that real kind of human piece of the work being done. And we're able to talk about maybe the less fun, but still, still very important information around the, what the data is telling us. One of our primary roles in the community is to be constantly monitoring what that information is telling us, so that we can make educated decisions for our entire community when it comes to how to make those, how to pivot as needed to keep solving homelessness. So Amber briefly mentioned our point-in-time count. HUD expects our COCs to run an annual count where we are literally counting folks in our community who identify as literally homeless. These are not folks who are doubled up, these are folks who are in places not meant for human habitation, or folks who are in shelter. So that point-in-time count, as Amber mentioned, was held this January. We, we hold it the last 10 days every January. So most of the data that we're going to present for you is the data from 2019, because we are still kind of compiling our 2020 data. As you can imagine, it's only been a couple of weeks, we're still rounding all that up. But here's, here's what we know. So when you look, when you look at our data here, we've got 2017, 18, and 19. First and foremost, what you see is that the numbers are growing. Homelessness continues to grow in our community. For the last two years, we've had an 8% growth of homelessness in our full COC, and that absolutely speaks to, to Independence as well. So the number in white here, so for instance, for 2019, you'll see the 243. That number refers to folks who are unsheltered and literally on the streets in those places not meant for human habitation. And then that number in dark is the folks who are at least finding shelter at night, but are still absolutely, literally homeless. Those are relatively high numbers for our, for our full community. That's our, these numbers represent our full COC. And then next, we're going to give you a little bit of comparative data. So we know that Independence, sorry, represents about 5% of that number, of that overall number of homelessness in our overall COC. What we also know is that it certainly looks like, based on what we're seeing so far from 2020, our numbers absolutely are continuing to rise. This is still raw, unaudited data so far for 2020. That said, you can see that we've moved from 243 to so far, it looks like around 360 unsheltered persons. That's a significant jump. Even if that number shifts out a little bit, that, that 2020, 361 number, we absolutely know that we are still moving towards an increase in homelessness in our community. This problem is not going away, and we still need to continue to solve it. Like Amber said, the folks that she spoke with in Independence, these folks aren't moving over to Kansas City, they're not moving to different places to find, to find housing, they're staying here in Independence. Let's see here. I am going to next put us in front, put Sarah in front of us, who's going to talk a little bit about policy and talk a little bit about how we are using the data that we have thus far to help start making some decisions in our community and kind of where we're moving.
Thank you all for having us today. My name is Sarah Ausley Townsend. I work for an organization, I messed it all up. Okay. That seems right. We'll have a whole slew of people, and I will mess it all up. My name is Sarah Ausley Townsend. I work for an organization called Empower Missouri. We do statewide housing work, statewide policy work, and I lead our housing work, which means I get to speak to councils across our state around issues of affordable housing. I could take a significant amount of time to really talk about how we view housing affordability and how we prioritize affordable housing. But tonight, I'm going to try to do it in a very shortened presentation. I appreciated setting the stage tonight with issues around workforce housing, which is folks making about 80% AMI roughly. However, there's a lot of the workforce that makes significantly less than 80% of AMI. And in that story of Mary, who works and still cannot afford their housing, we see that a lot across our community. In fact, in Kansas City, about 75% of people who are making 50% of AMI or below, so about half of the average, more than half of those folks are overpaying for housing. And we should consider that those folks are often at risk of becoming homeless, because, you know, we all know we can kind of like really stretch things for a short amount of time, and then we get a flat tire, or someone's hospitalized for a couple of days, or grandma dies, something like that. We need to take a few days off of work, and suddenly, we don't have the very limited income that we had. That shortage is going to be made up for somewhere, and often, that shortage ends up in something that affects our ability to stay in housing. So we really look at housing affordability around people who are making about 50% AMI and below, where we really do see a significant shortage of housing. In fact, in Kansas City, for every 100 people in that income range who are looking for housing at 50% AMI or below, that they can afford, that keeps them about 30% of their income, there's about 70 units. So there are 30 families, we know right off the bat, that are not going to be able to afford housing. And if their income is even lower, that number jumps into about 40 units. So if you're making about 30% AMI, there's only about 40 units available for every 100 people. So there's 60 families that are not going to be able to find housing that's affordable to them. So the question that's always asked of me is, what can city councils do to really impact what that looks like in our communities? So many of our recommendations mirror that of the first report, considering the importance and priority of affordable housing as you all make policy decisions, considering density and the role of density and zoning. Not everybody needs a giant yard all the time, and so how we can use density and zoning to benefit folks to, to be able to afford to stay in our community, prioritizing affordable housing with the way that we use incentive packages and abatements. There's a couple of things that really could be looked at in Independence and could be really successful. One of those is considering a source of income discrimination ban. So that is, in the state of Missouri, if you receive SSI as your income, they don't have to count that necessarily as income. Certainly, if you receive a voucher, even though this is guaranteed income that comes from the federal government, it doesn't have to be counted as income. And so folks who use those programs in order to move out of homelessness often find difficulty finding places that they can actually utilize those vouchers in the community. And partnered in Independence with the Rental Ready Program, their, Independence is really well situated to look at increasing access for those folks to take their vouchers and achieve stable housing here in our community, to stay in the place that they choose to live in. And finally, looking towards some longer-lasting... And finally, looking towards some longer-lasting sort of large-range picture ideas, we can look at community land trusts as ways to control the housing in our community, to maintain the folks who have lived here for a long time, to keep them here, and to preserve long-term affordability in housing ownership, as well as considering an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a really flexible pot of money that can be used for rental assistance, but also preservation and rehab of existing affordable units. So, I'm going to move on. I think Erin Crossley from Truman Behavioral Center is going to speak to us next, but I would be happy to sit down and answer any questions that anybody has over the long term. I live here in the Kansas City area, so I'm available. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Erin Crossley. I am the Project Coordinator for our housing program at Truman Medical Center's Behavioral Health. I'm also an Independence resident. I live in Golden Acres in District Three, so thank you for letting me get to speak about my passion and also get to speak about an issue that's alive and well here in our community. The cost of addressing homelessness, of course, is real, because addressing any social issue requires some amount of cost. However, tonight I'd also like to talk about the cost of doing nothing about homelessness, because there is a cost to the individual who's experiencing homelessness. There's also a cost to society when we don't do anything to address homelessness as well. When you think about a person who is homeless and the cost that it costs them, of course, you know, it costs a loss of family connection, because they can't easily get to their family because transportation, transportation, there are no neighbors around. There are also, of course, since I work for a hospital, I'm concerned about health, and there's a health cost to the individual as well. You think about somebody who has sleep apnea and needs a CPAP machine, they can't wheel the CPAP machine around with them around town if they're homeless, so they can't address that issue. They can't address their diabetes, they can't address their heart issues. And so their health issues are exacerbated. And also, not only are those unmanaged symptoms present, but there are also mismanaged symptoms. So people who suffer from homelessness are twenty-seven, twenty percent, twenty-seven percent of the homeless population lives with some sort of substance use issue, because they're trying to address symptoms that are present, whether it's schizophrenia, whether it's depression, they're trying to address it with substances that are available to them rather than medication. There's also a financial cost to society when we don't address homelessness. These costs can include hospitalization. So hospitalizations for people who are living with homelessness are $2,414 more per episode on average than those who are living in a home, because again, they are letting symptoms go, they're letting their, their health issues persist rather than being treated. Shelter operations, sometimes we think shelters can be the savior of solving homelessness, but in reality, a HUD-funded emergency bed in a shelter costs $8,067 more than a HUD subsidy voucher for someone. So how do we address homelessness? Is it providing shelters? No, again, that, that health, that cost is more than just providing a home. Clearing out homeless camps, that feels like we're getting rid of the problem, but it's not a cost savings or a cost elimination, it's a cost shifting. So rather than being on one embankment, they might move to an embankment in another council district. And so that cost persists. At Truman, we feel comfortable with saying on, at the national level, it costs about $56,000 per year per individual who's homeless. So that's about $153 a day to society for someone to be homeless. But at Truman, we know it costs about $40 a day to house someone. And so the quickest and most cost-effective way to solve homelessness is not to let someone be homeless, but it's to provide a home, because it costs less. And of course, my warm, squishy social worker heart just says it's the right thing to do as well. If I could end by just kind of punctuating with some data I have from Truman, from our own housing program, we are in the middle of a campaign called the Five Hundred and Five, so we are about two and a half years in. We want to create 500 additional units of supportive housing in the next five years. So again, we are about two and a half years in, we've created at least 284 units up to this point of supportive housing for our clients. Right at the beginning of the campaign in October 2017, we took 22 of our clients, 22 of our residents who were in our supportive housing program, and we measured their emergency room usage and their psychiatric inpatient usage, six months prior to being housed and six months after being housed. And what we found was their ER usage decreased by 64% in six months after being housed. Just by providing a house, they used the emergency room 64% less. The most complex patients saw psychiatric inpatient hospitalization decrease of 38%. And the total cost of care to TMC, so TMC I think sometimes of us as being a city unto ourselves, it's a large system within Kansas City. So the cost of care to us for this group of 22 people decreased by nearly half, six months post-housing. And I can give you all of these numbers later if you would like, but the total cost of care six months before being housed was 3,028, or, excuse me, 328,560. And after they were housed, six months, it was 171,840. So again, the quickest and best and most cost-efficient way to solve homelessness is a home.
Want to thank you for your time tonight with this issue, and I know that, that when we start talking about things, sometimes often more questions come forward than, than answers. But I hope that we've shed a light through data, through reporting on some of the challenges, some of the pathways that are out. I do want to talk real quickly about very tangible effort and recommendation that would bring forward to this council at this point. I, I hope that one theme that carried through was the pathway out of homelessness into permanent housing is usually done, almost exclusively done, with supports along the way. And I would put into context for you, so that you feel this is not a conversation you're having alone. Part of our CSL outreach, because we serve throughout Eastern Jackson County, we have outreach and are currently working with folks in Oak Grove, Rain Valley, Blue Springs, and Independence, and it's an issue up and down for our communities off of I-70 that are dealing with. But regardless of the community that you're in, it takes some type of like a social worker position, a mental health position, a police officer, somebody that's trusting and caring to help navigate the many challenges that come across the way. And you think about, I can only imagine, did not make the request of city staff to look into it, but I would imagine if we looked at the number of calls either to 911 or to, to the non-emergency police line regarding the care and welfare for those that are homeless or potentially criminal activity, and of course, we would endorse that police be responsive to when laws are being broken. But would make this recommendation to you that the council look at, for the upcoming city budget, adding a couple of social worker positions, potentially under Independence Police Department, within city staff. And you think about potentially the cost savings that would occur, because right now we have police officers who are, as we know, stretched very thin in their resources and are oftentimes going out and really checking on folks, which is a very noble thing to do. But I think from a cost savings, a staff support structure can be better accomplished with some type of a social work position, somebody that could respond to it, whether it needs to be done immediately, or maybe it's a very non-issue that could wait until the next business day or something like that, where, and then allow and free up our police officers to continue to do what they do best and protect the safety and welfare of our citizens, allow them to be as active as they can within those roles. So I would advise you to consider that as you look at city staffing operations moving forward. Also, I know that the city is talking, all cities are looking about how, how to increase efficiencies, and homelessness is this issue that we talked about in a regional perspective, and as I mentioned, other communities that are dealing with it. And it doesn't stop at 40 Highway where the Independence, Raytown, and Kansas City line is. It doesn't stop between Independence and Sugar Creek, or Kansas City and Independence. It is an issue that spreads apart, but so often we look at where the, the boundaries are, and so I would suggest that there's a possibility to, to co-op these services with other cities through shared service initiatives and provide additional regional support and collaboration, because a lot of times folks may move. And we're using technology, geo-mapping a lot better to help track folks and where they're at, so that we can continue to, to find them and move them towards permanent housing. But shared service coordinators among multiple communities is definitely a viable strategy to continue to look at. So those are a couple of recommendations that we wanted to offer. Did you have, did I cover that, or was there additional?
You.
I did cover it. Okay. Did we have any final closing remarks? Team, I would be happy to, now we have covered an exhaustive amount, and I appreciate your time and attention, and I would do the best that I could to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Honest question. Thank you for the great presentation. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Doug, and thank you for the rest of the, the group here that presented. It seems like, you know, it's such a very important but multifactorial problem, and it seems like it's growing, it's getting to be even more of a problem, not just for Independence, but like you said, it, it's, it's across the United States. It's not just, it's just here. So, just a couple of quick questions that I had, and I'm not sure that you can really answer these totally, but how many would you say are below the high school age? So how many are adolescent or below? How many are there because of health, mental health-related issues? That was touched on, I believe, by Erin.
Yeah, I, I will tell you this, while I don't have an exact count, I will tell you during our most recent point-in-time count, and that is again, where we are out for a 24-hour period counting folks, verifying what we think we know is going on, a part of a nationally coordinated effort. We have, we did in Independence outreach to youth under the age of 18. So there are youth under the age of 18 living on the streets in our communities. I believe our most recent statistic is approximately eighty percent of those that we outreach to stated that they had persistent mental or substance abuse challenges, as Amber reiterated. One of our, what we're looking for capacity for is how do we continue to bring along more mental and health, mental and substance abuse health providers? It's critical to the long-term success of folks, so as we continue to outreach, we want those folks to be with us and to provide those services. Did you want to elaborate on that?
If you don't mind, I will just very quickly give some actual, give a couple of numbers here. So, and the good news about youth homelessness, now HUD defines youth as 24 or younger, so first of all, I do think that that's important to note here. And then, the good news is, our youth numbers are going down. Both our youth and veteran numbers for the last three years are consistently on a downward trajectory, so that's wonderful news. Last year, we had, we were showing only sixteen unsheltered out of a total of 95 identified homeless youth in the overall continuum of care, and the year before that, it was 136 overall. So, so that's kind of just to give you a quick glimpse into some of those numbers.
Thank you.
And, and there is a difference, you hear, you do hear a lot about youth homelessness. Homelessness is a word that is often used, there's a difference between on-the-street homeless and then what meets some definition of homeless, which we often call doubled up, meaning they don't have a permanent place of residence, but they might be staying with a friend, a relative, but it is not a place of their own.
Right.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Well, that's, that was going to be my question, because the statistics that we were shown in the point-in-time count doesn't count people who are doubled up. Is that right? Did I hear that correctly? I mean, these are strictly people who are either sheltered temporarily or unsheltered. Am I right?
So, again, excuse me. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So HUD definition here for youth is just a little bit different. So as a general rule, the answer to your question is yes, absolutely. We are talking about what we call literally homeless. So again, that, you know, not meant for human habitation. For youth, HUD does allow us to count folks who are doubled up, because they recognize that that precarious situation for youth, again, 24 and under, looks a little different. And they're trying to keep those youth from being our chronically homeless, you know, five and 10 years down the road. So when we are counting youth, we are able to include folks who are doubled up, but that's the only population that we're able to do that for.
Okay. All right. That, that helps. I, I mean, we can analyze this a million ways in terms of what the actual problem is. I think you said it well in the beginning, Doug, that the tip of the iceberg is the street homeless that we see and see more of in our community and in communities all across the country. But it doesn't take into account all of the children in our schools who don't have secure housing. I mean, that is a major component of those children and families who are, you know, at risk, and certainly at risk for long-term poverty and homelessness. And I'm not sure that the information in this report necessarily captures that. That's what I'm, that's what I'm wanting at, because when I look at those numbers, which is about 2,000 people counted in the Kansas City metropolitan area, and it looked like the number, well, the overall number increased, the number of unsheltered looked, if I remember incorrectly, it looked like it decreased. But, you know, that's just part of, part of the story, is what I'm getting at, because I know in working with CSL, Hillcrest Ministry, I mean, many agencies in our town, that we know that there's a lot of children who, who don't have secure housing, which isn't necessarily reflective in these numbers.
And where's, where?
Yeah, go ahead. Don't be shy, come on up.
We're multi-monthly vacuumed.
And I just want to make sure that I'm not, I mean, I'm not discounting this data in your report, I mean, I think that's very important, but I think that we're, I don't want our community to be overlooking that there's, you know, a whole nother aspect of this that may not be reflected in these numbers.
That is 100% correct, and I, I should clarify absolutely that the numbers I'm giving you with those youth numbers are unaccompanied youth.
Right.
So that is purely unaccompanied youth, and we are not talking about the families that are experiencing homelessness. That's a, that's a different number that gets a lot harder to kind of suss out from, from our data. So, that, that unaccompanied number is that smaller number, the 136 to the, to the 95. So that is 100% correct, that there's a whole other population to, to be considered here as well. And I know Sarah had just one point of clarification as well. Thank you.
I just had two responses, actually, to what you were saying, Mayor. First of all, the number of families and individuals who are at risk is a really difficult number to sort of suss out. We recommend that we really look at that cost burdened number. Nobody is like stretching their budget to where there's no, no flexibility on purpose and like having a great time doing that, right? So we can assume then that families who are experiencing cost burden or extreme cost burden, there are families in our community who pay more than 70%, sometimes more than 90% of their income towards housing costs, those folks are all at risk of experiencing homelessness. And we know that the number-one way in Missouri, that families enter homelessness for the first time is through eviction. The second, speaking to like kids who are in the school district, Independence has the advantage that all of our kids are in Jackson County school, or in Jackson County, right? And therefore, those families will all go through eviction court in Jackson County. Kansas City, Missouri has partnered with Jackson County, and now all the students, Kansas City Public School students, who are flagged in an eviction case, the schools are notified. We could look at a program similar that could operate through Independence School Districts to sort of help with that early intervention to families who are at extreme risk.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah, comments or questions? I have a few, but. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to ask, I know there's a lot of other groups, and there's several luckily that are represented with you here tonight, Doug, but they've mentioned the school districts obviously have to be involved because of the students. I know Salvation Army is involved, they have the only homeless shelter here in Independence.
I think it's important to clarify that they, they operate a, a family shelter, which I think is great that we have that resource here.
And it's a little different, right?
It is, but it, it's important that we, to note that it is a family shelter, that families stay there. Unfortunately, single men and single women that are on the streets are not able to access those services. Still very glad they're here, just clarifying that.
And then, and then the mental health groups like Comprehensive here, Rediscover, Tri County, all the mental health groups that are involved in the, in the area. I was wondering if, and you guys with CSL are positioned ideally to be a clearinghouse and to be a central clearinghouse for contact for some of these particular problems. So if, if people want to get involved, let's say, the school district or the Comprehensive folks, or a faith community, not just Salvation Army, but any of the faith community wants to become involved, wants to help, I would like for you to at least tell to become involved, wants to help, I would like for you to at least tell us how they can contact CSL. You guys are the natural clearinghouse because you're located in all the communities around us as well as Independence. And it would make sense that you would be able to feed information to a faith community or some other group, maybe a Kiwanis Club or somebody else that wants to be involved in some way in helping, you know, some of the homeless population in ways that can make a difference. And so, that would, that would be a big benefit to Independence and to the community. My, my other concern has to do with the mental health situation, and we're, we're at a point now in eastern Jackson County where we have very little, if any, crisis beds available. It's, it's a crisis, really, in Jackson County as well as in the state of Missouri. And I'm hoping that our state legislators will listen and will do something. There is no really good, successful crisis centers in eastern Jackson County. We have one at Research Mental Health. We have one down at Truman West. There's one in Smithville. I believe those are the only ones left. Most of the others have closed. Truman East closed there several years ago. They have one for seniors, and that's it. So, we're at a point where there's very little place for our police department or even CSL or anybody to take someone that's in crisis with mental health issues. The hospitals used to all have a mental health ward. They don't anymore. None of them have it except Truman. So, I, I hope that the voters out there, when you go and talk with your legislature, you need to go and talk to your legislator, whether it's the House member or the senator, and say, "We've got to do something about the mental health crisis in, in eastern Jackson County, but also in the whole state of Missouri." It's, it's now a crisis level, and it's going to affect the homeless population, and it's going to affect how we can help them, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Councilman, I appreciate your comments. Of course, if anybody that's interested, they can email us at info@CSLCares.org. They can call us at 254-4100, and we'd be happy to visit with them. And appreciate your remarks regarding the advocacy. I do think, I'm not a full-time advocate, but I would suggest that, the things that I know that, helping at the state level to fund additional supports enjoys very strong bipartisan support and a bipartisan unilateral commitment to help folks. And I think as folks are, are my fellow neighbors here in Independence, that we can raise our voices, whatever the issue, to encourage support from the state level to help address issues in our community.
Thanks, Doug.
Couple things that come to mind. I think Councilman Robinson is right. Amber said, you know, "We need more boots on the ground." We need to know what that means. I mean, this community wants to help to solve this problem, to assist with this, and we need to know what that looks like. I mean, people need to be, whether it's through policy, whether it's through philanthropy, whether it's through volunteerism, whatever, what does that look like? So, I think that that is very important, and I think CSL and many other community partners can help us to create that strategy of what is needed. You're right that we have two police officers in our city who are assigned to, specifically assigned to this. We have many officers who are trained as crisis, for crisis intervention, but they have to be cops. I mean, they have to spend, you know, they can't spend that kind of time with people who are in crisis when they're, you know, the radio's going and they're off to the next call. When we started looking at the local use tax and what that would be, where, where those funds could be directed for our community, and there's several people here tonight who are very active in that campaign, we consider, there was a discussion about hiring, creating a CIT unit. And Chief Halsey, you know, he and I discussed it on several occasions, and the reality was, there's no place to take people. I mean, we could have all of the CIT officers that we could possibly get our hands on, but it doesn't solve the problem of, well, then, what, they're still police officers. They still need, you know, a place to go. So, maybe social workers is a good recommendation, you know, and we would obviously need to figure out, you know, where the funding for those people would be and, you know, how our community partners could work with, with us to identify what the best solution would be for that. I, there's, you know, we go, we travel to a lot of different cities. We have the opportunity to do that. And nearly every conference I attend, this is a topic in, you know, there's always sessions on homelessness, on veteran homelessness. And so, you know, definitely, we know it is a issue all across our nation, and, you know, if somebody had the answer, we'd all be doing it, right? But I will say that I think that this city, this community needs to decide and answer the question of how we want to address homelessness. Because I can tell you that the cities who are being, in my experience, the cities that are, that are recognized for being successful in homelessness don't have zero homeless people. They have a, they have accepted the homeless population as a part of their community, and they have found a way to integrate the homeless population into their community in a way that that community embraces and accepts. So, we need to ask ourselves the question of what is it that we envision for Independence? Is it to provide more services, which requires more resources and identifying where those resources are going to come from? Is it saying, "You can be homeless, just go be homeless someplace else," and push people out of our community? Or is it to say, you know, "The homeless population is part of our community, and we're going to find a way to peacefully coexist"? I mean, Doug, when you tell us, and I've had this much experience with this myself, I mean, but when we hear it takes four years to place one person, that's overwhelming. And it's over, and I know that's not the only person you helped during those four years. I mean, I understand that, but it's overwhelming to think if we've got 2,000 people who need that kind of intense one-on-one connections and all the agencies and individuals that you talked about who assisted with this one individual, I mean, it's just overwhelming to think about how we're going to address this problem while it continues to grow. So, I know we have a lot, a couple more presentations this evening that will kind of dig into these things as well, but I really think that this is very important for this community to have this conversation about what is it that we're trying to accomplish. And we really do need everybody's help in that, and also really some actionable things that people can be doing.
Thank you all for your time. And I would just add to our, to my neighbors here that as we continue this community dialogue, I think it's really critical and what I would applaud for the theme for tonight is the coupling of housing policy, because I think I alluded to this earlier. Good housing policy and actions throughout a community has a positive flow to all income ranges within the housing, including those that are very high and those are very low. Many of those very low folks are on the streets. And so, as we continue it, I would suggest we not just have a conversation about homelessness as an individual thing, but it needs to be part of this continued broader conversation about housing in our community.
Mayor, if I may. Thanks. Big discussion, lot of heavy topics tonight. Just talking with Officer Grooms and Officer McLaughlin quite a bit about everything we're talking about here. The drug addiction that a lot of these individuals find themselves is just a tight grip. It's a huge grip. The mental illness is right behind there. Take that aside. How many people, what is the scenario of people who are just truly down on their luck? You know, got a, lost their job, bum economy, those kind of things, which by really no fault of themselves necessarily, definitely not by addiction, definitely not by mental illness, but just dumb luck? Would you say that the drug addiction and mental illness is probably higher up on that spectrum than?
Absolutely. I think I, you know, we shared a lot of things. I think I said earlier, approximately 80% of folks that we outreach to said that they had a recurring mental or substance abuse, mental health or substance abuse challenge in their life. So, I think, you know, looking at eight out of 10 folks, and so, you know, 20% of folks might be, to use your phrase, dumb luck or a horrible set of circumstances that may have occurred to them.
So, with that, there's been a, I would say, shift over probably the last 10 years, seven years of our faith-based communities. And I look around, there's, there's some here that have celebrate recovery, have different aspects within their church organizations to help bring those individuals who want the help through the faith-based organizations to start driving themselves, getting themselves out of that addiction. And that is a part that I think our community really needs to start to think about, that this is just a deeper issue than just, you don't have housing or that. I mean, this is a bigger, deeper issue that is really rooting in deeply here. And as a part of this, I think our faith-based communities across the spectrum needs to have a strong hand in trying to lift these individuals up and how we can work with that and make policies that make it easier, less restrictive for some of these faith-based organizations to, I don't say lack of a better word, but house, temporarily house, shelter individuals within the community, because they're here. They're already here within our neighborhoods. And there's plenty of organizations and faith-based organizations that, through proper training and understanding, can probably help out on a temporary basis for some of that. But that is a shift that, that has been taking place here that I think we can tap into, dive into, to try to help lift these individuals up on a permanent basis, because it takes time. You build a habit doing whatever. It's going to take a lot of time to undo that habit, both chemically and both by what you do when, when you make habit changes. It just takes time, and we need to be patient and work with those individuals who are willing to do that, to make those different changes. So, it's a huge community discussion where we've got to take time and patience to make this work correctly.
Thank you for your comments. I, I agree with you 100%. And there are some organizations in our community who have raised their hands and said, "We'd like to be part of this. We'd be interested in working with city government on some spot zoning or creative zoning or perhaps some type of new zoning that doesn't currently exist that allows us to perhaps temporarily house folks." And do so, they want to work with city governments and want to work with neighborhoods so that it's a good accommodation for all. And so, as we address these problems, I think it is critical as we move forward that we exercise creativity, open-mindedness to what could be done, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could talk about this all night, but we'll move on. Next, Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity Home Preservation Program, Mr. Sanander.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you heard in the first presentation from Lauren, certainly, a big part of this housing issue for us here in Independence is dealing with the housing stock we've already got, preserving the housing quality. Part of that effort in our community falls within the wheelhouse of the Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. So, tonight, we've invited Christina Leakey to come and speak to us a little bit about the efforts that her organization is focused on and how that relates into this overall housing conversation that we're having. So, we will turn over to Christina.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to share in this important conversation around housing and strategy for the future. Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity, of course, is an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International, and we're glad to be celebrating our 30th year of service in eastern Jackson County. A good chunk of that service is provided here in the community of Independence, and we've enjoyed a wonderful partnership with the City of Independence and organizations like Community Services League, who make it really easy for Habitat to be successful in the work that we do. We are just one step, but a very blessed step, along the continuum of housing, where we are fortunate to have organizations pass families to us that have had investment from them and are ready for that next step towards housing security. And then, in that way, we're able to stabilize those families for the future by giving them the housing opportunity, opportunity that they need, but we're also able to bless the neighborhoods that we work in with the investment that we bring. So, in that way, our, our job is usually quite easy. Most people who know Habitat for Humanity know the traditional model of housing, which is about building homes for families who are interested in becoming homeowners and just can't get there through the traditional means, and that's where we come in. We bring people together, people like you and, and I, and the people that are watching this presentation, to build homes. Frankly, we're, we are successful because the community of volunteers come and work alongside us, a lot of times with donated material and, and grant funds and the sponsorships of community organizations. And we are able to build a home for a family in a very affordable way. And then, we, we also stay with them through the life of what is a very affordable home purchase program. We are not just the builder and the developer, but we're also the lender for these families. And many people don't know that about the Habitat model, that we're actually not giving these homes away. These homebuyers are able to purchase the homes with a mortgage, a 30-year mortgage, so a longstanding commitment. But the reason that we're able to make that affordable is we offer them a zero-interest mortgage that's guaranteed to be at 30% of their income when they buy. And so, in that way, we can oftentimes take a homeowner purchase, a homeowner's purchase payment from what they might have been paying in rent, anywhere from $700 to $1,100 a month nowadays, down below $500 a month. So, you can understand that being able to provide that option for them helps them save for other things that they would really, that will bring them the quality of life and the financial success they're looking for, like education and healthcare expenses, and just frankly, saving to invest in that home in the future by adding on to it, hopefully growing their family, contributing to the neighborhood and the property values around them. That's our goal. But really, what I'm here to talk to you tonight about is not about the traditional model. It's actually about what has become an expansion of Habitat services, not just here in the Independence community, but actually what is part of a global initiative to really invest in home preservation. So, I've said we've enjoyed a partnership with the City of Independence. That partnership is through funding support that we've been able to secure through the commitment of home repair funds through the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, but also weatherization support that we get through the Independence Power and Light and Co-Delivery Program with Spire Energy. And in that way, we have been able to expand our services beyond just the traditional homeownership model. And that's, it's a very important expansion of service because the need right now is really around home repair. And I'll get into discussion a little bit more about the need, but I want to quickly just explain what we mean when we say home preservation. So, home repair in our world is, is really, it can be anything from a minor paint job to doing replacement of exterior building materials that might be deteriorated, like siding, returning that home to good condition. And a lot of times, we call these minor repairs because we're able to conduct these repairs with the assistance of volunteers. We're able to get a lot of the materials donated through national and local partnerships that we have, and in that way, we can really come out, serve a need that a, at a lower-income homeowner has at a very small cost to both the organization and eventually to the homeowner. And I'll explain our, our financing model for home preservation here in a minute. So, these are small projects, and that, when we, when Habitat International really decided that home preservation was a service that we needed to provide, I think they largely thought that home preservation would be minor repair. I think they thought that was going to be a volunteer-friendly service. It was going to be affordable to the homeowner, and that's really where we could kind of fill a gap. What we learned is the gap is much, the, the gap in need is much greater than that. So, then came critical home repair services. And these really are defined beyond just those minor maintenance issues. Now, we're getting into things that really are absolutely critical to stabilizing the home. That can be everything from removing a tree that's growing into the foundation or the roof of a house, so that that so that that homeowner can not only know that their house will be secure, but a lot of times it affects whether or not they can get or renew their homeowner's insurance, which is something that we're seeing more and more of. Homeowners coming to us with a repair, like a tree removal, just so they can maintain their homeowner's insurance. A lot of times, we're seeing major mechanical issues that need to be addressed in order for homeowners to live safely in their home. It can be a critical repair that will allow them to remain in place. So with an aging senior population, you can imagine that a lot of the homes that weren't necessarily built with aging in place in mind now need major adaptions for those homeowners to be able to remain living there comfortably in the home that they own. So that can be widening doorways to allow for wheelchair access, building ramps, doing zero-entry bathroom remodels so that they are able to have safe and convenient access to just the, the basic needs that they have on a daily basis. And then the third component of our home preservation program is the weatherization. And this is absolutely critical to ensuring affordability for our homeowners over the life of, over their time living there. We are seeing more and more that utility burden for, particularly for seniors on restricted income is a major issue in terms of affordability. And so with the weatherization program, we're able to go in and do needed repairs to mechanical systems, but also to address those issues of air infiltration and things that are driving the utility costs up. And the great thing about this program is that it is part, it includes an education component that really teaches the family not only how to maintenance their mechanical systems and things that will sustain the life or improve the life expectancy of those units, but it also teaches them how to conserve energy so that they can kind of control what their utility bills look like. So just to explain how home preservation fits into the Habitat housing model. Overall, the, the main initiative for Habitat International is that we are here to eliminate poverty housing and to prevent homelessness by making sure that everyone has a decent and affordable place to live. Again, I explained that most people know our model for the, the new construction and the renovation we do that creates new homeownership opportunity. And you can see here now that we've added to that housing investment or the construction intervention program the opportunities to do home preservation through minor repairs, weatherization, and critical repairs. But I do want to draw note to those non-construction interventions that Habitat does provide, which I believe is key to our success, the success of our homeowners in not only participating in our program, but then having the self-sufficiency for the long haul to hopefully not have to come back and need these types of services again in the future. And that's really where we can support them, both on the pre-construction and the post-construction side with financial literacy and homeowner education. And that's, that can be very important even for an existing homeowner who, they're already in the mortgage, but they haven't necessarily understood how, over the life of their homeownership, saving and planning for those critical repair needs and knowing how to manage the maintenance of their home would affect the overall affordability in the future. And so we can provide an education component and a financial component to existing homeowners that help stabilize and then hopefully put them in a better position to be successful for the rest of the life of their homeownership. We also provide no-cost affordable lending, which is something that if you're a homeowner of a older, an older home that maybe is declined in value because of the distressed area around the possibility of them getting home equity financing to do needed home repairs, when those repairs rise in cost is very unlikely. We are seeing more and more people come to us needing major investment in their home where it's more than fifty percent of the value of the home just to stabilize the structure. And there's no way that a home equity loan is going to be available to them. We're not always able to solve those problems with the lending that we provide, but generally, that no-cost loan that we can give in a home repair scenario is going to allow them to make one or more critical repairs that they need in order to stabilize their situation. And then finally, I think this is a critical or a very important element that we bring to housing investment in our community. And that's just really that engaged, community engagement and advocacy piece. When we bring volunteers out to help us build and improve homes for our existing homeowners, we're really helping the community see the need, be a part of the solution, and just build a advocacy team to, to support the overall cause for affordable housing in the community. So just to kind of touch on some of the reasons again that Habitat has moved into the home preservation model. I mean, really, we would love to build all-new houses. Frankly, it's a whole lot easier and it's a whole lot more fun for volunteers to be out building and raising the walls on a new home. But frankly, the need is for home repair for existing homeowners. And we want to be the kind of community partner that responds to the need that's, that is there to be served and not just doing the fun, easy projects. It's, it's obvious that we will have a greater impact in our, in the communities that we serve if we're serving more families. And that's where home preservation programming allows us to affect a greater number of lives. We are, with the funding resources we have just for the Independence community alone, we're doing somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty-five home repairs a year. And we're able to do somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty weatherization programs. We'd love to do more, but that's, that's where we're at right now. Obviously, our work in stabilizing housing stock and improving housing stock has a positive effect on neighborhood revitalization efforts. And that's where we can continue to be a key partner to the community. As you develop housing strategy for the city, we of course want to go where the strategy is taking us for the overall benefit of the community. And so when we're considered, I guess, as a resource and a partner in housing investment, our, the concentrated effort can have a much bigger effect. And then, of course, that opportunity to increase community collaboration and volunteerism. As I mentioned, we have the, the zero-cost loans Habitat's model is really, I think, kind of coined the phrase, we're a hand up, not a handout. It's important to us that the families that we serve, no matter what their situation is, that they are given an opportunity to be a part of their own solution. And so in that way, we don't give away services. But there's always a way that people, that the people that we serve can give back. And that happens sometimes through the model of a no-cost loan where we can make that payment affordable to them based on their income and the amount of time that it takes to pay that back. Some of our homeowners are making payments of ten dollars a month, and that's what they can do, and that's okay. But they have a part in solving their own problems. Sometimes homeowners contribute by providing sweat equity. They actually get out and work alongside the construction team. Or maybe they donate time, volunteer time in our office or our restore operation, whatever they're capable of contributing. That's how they participate in being a part of the process. Because I know it's going to be part of the challenge that you're facing as you think about housing strategy in the future, I think it's important that we talk about what some of the barriers are to the success of the home preservation program. Of course, the volume of need is tremendous. At one point, we had a hundred and seventy-five families on a waiting list for home preservation services, and we just frankly stopped taking names because it was so difficult for us to keep, have to keep telling people that we'd add them to the waiting list with no solution in sight. Like I said, we're typically supporting somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five families a year for home repair services. So you can imagine with a growing waiting list like that, how difficult it is for people to just be continually, have a door shut in their face. So the volume of need is tremendous. Some of that need comes from our homeowners, just their age and their disability. They typically are, those populations are the ones most challenged to do their own home repair, both the physical capability, but also the income restrictions that keep them from having the means to pay for those improvements or to have the ability to borrow, of course. We are seeing more and more situations, and this is something that I feel like the city needs to understand and think about how it could be addressed of predatory practices related to contract for deed scenarios. I'll tell you, just in the month of December, we saw four homeowner applicants who, on paper, they're homeowners. They pay the taxes. They are, it's recorded with a recorder of deeds. The contract is absolutely bogus. They've put down sometimes five to ten to twenty thousand dollars of down payment. The properties are not livable. And they, they in no way could be a candidate for us helping them just because we couldn't touch the problems that those structures have. And they, not only will they not be successful in getting those repairs, they likely will be without housing within a matter of months. There was at least two situations where we were fairly certain the houses might not stand for a month. And so this is, it's very disheartening to know that this is an investment model that owners have where they absolutely intend to take these people for the down payment, the down payment that they will get. And it's just a matter of time before they get that home back and do it again. And so just, just something to be aware of, that that type of an ownership position is not one that we can support. It's also not one, obviously, that another type of lending would support. And this is, I don't want to make it sound like this is an Independence problem. This is a national problem. It's very much a serious regional problem. But it's something that we're seeing more of than, than I recall in the past. And then just finally, the education piece. Most of the problems that we're seeing that homeowners come with a repair application for are really just issues of serious deferred maintenance. And this has a lot to do with homeowners needing the education that will help prevent those kinds of costs from developing over time. And this is a service that we can provide, but we, it's, it's something that we would like to see that type of an education program available for the entire community of homeowners that are out there so that hopefully we can start, we, we can make a dent in prevention over just being reactive. I do want to point out, and I'm not sure if the colors are coming through. You probably are familiar with this map. This is a map of the City of Independence' current designation of low-to-moderate income census tracts. Anything marked in blue is considered to be fifty-one percent or more low-to-moderate income households.
So that is kind of, the color didn't really come through on that, Christina. We, this is available online, but just so people watching understand, this map, you know, is the entirety of the first district, the vast majority of the fourth district, and the vast majority of the second district. And then there is a handful of census tracts in the third district that are considered low-income.
And it's, and I would point out, it's low-to-moderate income, which is at or below eighty percent of median income. And the reason that I show this map is typically low-to-moderate income census tracts can follow the age of the housing stock, especially when there's any amount of density. Not to say that there aren't portions, I'm sorry, portions of these, the populations that are high, would represent multifamily, high-density housing. I, I think it's fair to say that the better part of this area is actually development of single-family homes. And so when you consider that, that largely follow, that those areas largely follow the age of housing stock, and ideally, we would have a healthy homeownership percentage within those areas, that really kind of gives us an idea of how housing strategy has to address the need for home preservation over time unless we want to enter into a serious demolition program in the future. And so I would just like to encourage conversation around financing models that the city could support for investment for existing homeowners who will need to make critical and other types of repairs in order to help the community preserve the wonderful housing stock that it does have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I'm going to save mine for after the next presentation because I think it may answer some of my questions and maybe we'll have some, just general discussion at the end. But we'll move on to our final presentation of this evening, which is the Independence Chamber of Commerce Quality Housing and Safe Neighborhoods Committee Report. Mr. Sam Andrew.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as we wrap up the presentations tonight, Mr. Trevor Tilton is here in his capacity from the Independence Chamber of Commerce. As he will share with you, the chamber has established among its key goals and focus areas for the coming year to, to focus on this issue of housing. There's been a committee formed specifically of chamber members to, to look at that, many of whom are here tonight. But without further ado, we'll let Mr. Tilton tell you a little bit more about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Trevor Tilton. I am the Chair of the Independence Chamber of Commerce Quality Housing and Safe Streets Committee. Today, I'm going to go over our mission, committee goals, and highlight a successful program related to housing that Independence could implement. The Quality Housing and Safe Streets Committee was formed after our Chamber of Commerce board retreat. Issues of housing boiled to the top of our goals for 2020. Our mission is to help cultivate an environment within Independence that will promote quality housing at all price points, higher homeownership rates, and safer neighborhoods for residents and business owners. Independence has a very large stock of affordable housing options. The problem we face, though, affordable, these homes lack quality. The condition of these homes make it hard for homebuyers to secure traditional financing. And oftentimes, the properties are purchased by out-of-state investors paying cash, and the property continues to be a detriment to the neighborhood. Our committee goals are to develop a list of actionable items the city can implement to achieve the shared goals of quality housing and safer neighborhoods. The final report will be reviewed or approved by the Chamber Board of Directors and presented to the City Council for its consideration. Throughout the metro, other municipalities have faced similar challenges. Gladstone, for example, has implemented a program with encouraging results by fostering a partnership between police, property managers, and homeowners in a unified effort to better their neighborhoods. Sorry, I mixed up the slides. Okay, still wrong, but. Gladstone found that rental properties present a unique challenge for law enforcement. They found that homeowners are more likely to confront crime, and they found that renters are more likely to move away from crime. So they decided to start the Safe Residents Program, which is a unique coalition of police, property managers, and residents. There's the right. The Gladstone Residents Program has three phases. Ongoing, three-phase approach. Phase one, educate and assist landlord with screening. Phase two, the tenant signs a lease addendum not to participate or allow criminal activity in the residence. And then phase three, the property manager is notified of police calls for service at the address. Landlord is, at that time, given the option to evict. To date, every apartment complex in Gladstone is participating. And involvement in this program has resulted in fewer crimes and calls for service. program has resulted in fewer crimes and calls for service within the city limits of Gladstone. I believe a program like this one can be a great first step into a public-private partnership in which the interests of residents, property owners, and the City of Independence are aligned and can move more, or can move forward with an actionable plan to help achieve better neighborhoods and safer streets. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, we, Independence has in the past had a program for crime-free multi-housing. In talking to Chief Halsey just moments before the meeting, I understand that that program that we have had, we had, we started experiencing lower and lower participation in that voluntary program, and essentially, we no longer follow that model. Can we perhaps get a little bit of an update on the current status of our efforts with crime-free multi-housing?
Certainly, we'd be happy to bring back more information on that.
Okay. Because it is, and Officer Eccles, who's back there undercover as a boy scout tonight, was, I know, very involved with that at one time. So that is a program that we certainly have used with some success in the past, but needs refreshing or updating, so it would be interesting to look at some things that other cities have done regarding that. Are there other comments or questions from the council?
I do.
Yeah.
Under the Safe Residents Program on Phase Three, with the property manager notified of police calls for service, do we have something similar to that, Mr. City Manager, with our safe, with our nuisance homes? And two, I do like the idea of the landlord giving the option to evict. What type of, and to you too, Trevor, what type of legality, if you know, would trigger any problems if we have those immediate evictions?
Well, to address the first thing, where you said that the property manager will be notified, this is a huge deal if we can get that done, because right now, if there's a problem, like I said, and most of these things are, a lot of these, this housing stock is owned by out-of-state investors. And if there is a problem and an off-chance that a call is made to the property owner, they go to the tax records, and it falls on deaf ears somewhere in California or New York. So if we were able to get a program together and put all this information into one spot where we can get ahold of the people who are actually handling the property, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, and obviously, there's some bad landlords out there, but, I mean, most people, it's an investment that they're wanting to manage and take care of. So that would fix that. And as far, was your other question?
More about the legality of, I mean, there's, there's a process for a landlord to evict a tenant. Are you suggesting that Gladstone has some language in there that makes it easier for a landlord to get rid of somebody who's a nuisance?
So what this is, I mean, in my leases that I personally have, and pretty much every other landlord I know of, they all have this same clause in their lease, no criminal activity, but the teeth of this is, when you have the lease on file with the city, and then the city will actually notify you of the problem. If something happened at one of my rental houses, or, I mean, I would never hear about it, and there's been cases where I haven't heard about it. So, I mean, it's already in the lease language, and it is a legal thing to do. It's just, this gives it more teeth.
More of a follow-through on the city side to get you notified.
Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect.
How do I say this? My initial reaction is, I mean, understanding the problem that eviction causes, and I understand there are certain, I mean, there certainly are circumstances where an eviction is appropriate and necessary, but our region and our city has a enormous problem with evictions, and we've just heard, you know, from these agencies who are, you know, working to house people who can't because they have evictions on their record. So I think that that portion of it, obviously, needs to, a lot, you know, clearly, a lot more investigation about that problem of, problem, because in a sense, I, you know, we may just be trading one problem for another, and there was a, you know, we've heard a lot over the last couple of years about the rate of eviction and who, in particular, populations that are, are more likely to be evicted. And it's a big problem in Independence. I mean, there's certainly landlords in Independence who have a out-of-proportion rate of evictions. So I, you know, I think that's something that we need to really understand and touch carefully on while, of course, you know, protecting our neighborhoods and making sure that people who are breaking laws and committing crimes are properly dealt with. But, so that's just an initial reaction, but, you know, I'm very eager for the chamber to come forward with some more actionable items. And are these, Trevor, specifically, I mean, I presume these things are specifically geared to the City Council and actions that the local government can take in terms of zoning regulations, law enforcement, so on and so forth? Is there a broader aspect of this that is not limited to City Council action, but more community-based action?
I mean, the chamber itself, I mean, this is a very big problem, and the chamber is a group of business owners and nonprofit that come together. I mean, I don't believe that it's their job to dictate, or like administer landlord-tenant policy. I think that we can come up with good ideas, and, but, I mean, what do you do out in the public as a chamber that's not already being done by organizations whose sole purpose it is to do those things?
Okay.
I mean, I think that all we can do is try to come up with ideas that would push our city forward, and leave it to you guys to do the rest.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any general comments from our presentations tonight? I really appreciate everybody who came and shared their perspective and our expertise. We do look forward to hearing some recommendations about not only what the city, city can do, but what the community can do on these aspects. Councilman?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to direct this to the City Manager, see what we can do about this. You know, I was going down Little Blue Parkway, everything looking beautiful, the Black Bear, there's a Wendy's there. I'm just wondering why they left that pile of bricks on the other side of I-70 that I got to look at when I go to the arena. Is there any kind of policy or anything we can do? We've got quick trips that are empty. Boarded up for years, that Wendy's been down for a couple of years. I mean, I'm glad that Wendy's built down there and got some employment, but they left that pile of bricks over there. It needs to be taken care of.
We will look into it.
Number two, we've been talking about these crises. I think I have a real crisis here also. The police department's been contacting me quite a bit, quite a few officers out there. Seems that we're having a hard time recruiting people, we're having a hard time retaining people. I find it very, very hard in my mind that we only have nine officers on the north and nine officers on the south running the city at any given time. I don't, I don't, it's not even close. From my understanding, that we're losing officers, we're not being able to retain them due to various situations out here. The predictions is we're going to be down 12 by the next 30 to 60 days. I realize we have the tax coming in that we're supposed to employ another 12, so the way I'm looking at it, it's not coming in fast enough, so we're going to be down 24 officers in my, the way I figure that one out. Some of the things that's been told to me is, for instance, we do a 30-day hiring of patrolmen. Every 30 days, they run it, and we're lucky to see one applicant. I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to be able to get 12 officers, let alone the other 12. I just, I don't know what's going on out there. I'm hearing all kinds of different things. For instance, why would I work in Independence and do twice the volume of work for the same pay? The question, there is no question that the volume of calls and violent calls per capita far surpasses every area city with the exception of KCPD, but the numbers, for comparison, are not available at this time. I mean, I've got this coming to mail today about everything that's going on out here on 39th Street, where on the internet, people are saying, hey, I need a pair of Nike, size nine, and they go out there and walk in the store and grab the shoes and take them out. I need diapers. There's tons of this stuff all over the internet, selling this stuff. I mean, we're in a crisis here with this police, and, you know, if we don't start taking care of this city, there's not going to be a city here. The safety here is atrocious. You've got people can't even come out of their houses down there. I'm talking down on 39th Street, let alone the other districts, but I just think we need to figure out how to retain these people. I mean, you're losing, I think you lost one this week again. I mean, they're going, they come here from Raytown, Lee Summit, now they're all going back. There's got to be some way that we can keep these people, because we're not going to get qualified people. And we don't need to lower our standards for police officers, we need top-notch, so we need to figure out benefits, bonuses, pay, I don't care what it is, but we're never going to get there needing 24, and we only have a shot at one a month, and we're not even getting that one. That's all I have.
I guess I don't quite follow your math. The use tax allows for hiring 30 more officers, and these things run pretty cyclical. A few months, or maybe even a few years ago, the management analyst did an audit of this recruitment. I know the police department has worked very hard to send officers across the country to various police academies and to criminal justice programs. I know they went as far away as Cape Girardeau to Southeast Missouri State University, all the way up north to Maryville to Northwest Missouri State. They've worked very hard to try to recruit folks. For a while there, we got, we did have about 10 or 12 vacancies. They ran that number back down to zero. We are starting to creep up again in the vacancies just as people retire or people do leave for other employment opportunities, but we have done a salary study recently to make sure that we have all of our employees at market pay, and we continue to find ways to fund that. I'm going to be meeting with the chief here in the next few weeks to figure out other recruitment strategies that we can do to try to make sure that we not only recruit but retain qualified staff. I would say our chief has probably been among the staunchest in making sure we don't lower our standards. Those have not changed. He's been very determined to make sure, you know, where some agencies have gone into waiving things about prior drug use or, you know, other, you know, criminal background issues, he has stood firm in not waiving those. So we certainly share your concern to make sure we get qualified people who not only come but stay here and are proud to be police members of our outstanding department.
Sure, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to figure out why these guys are leaving us. You know, I don't know what it is, but I know we lost another one this week and a few last month or something, but anyway, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other topics?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To follow up that with Mr. City Manager, when an employee leave, do they have a, is there an exit interview or there, that they can't take? I mean, it's up to them, obviously, but do we get any feedback on, on why this and why that when they do leave?
So if you all recall the Shared Services Initiative that we've been working on, where we're partnering with Blue Springs and Lee Summit, who certainly we do compete with for talent, that is one of the efforts that have been put in place now, so we do have a far more robust exit interview process in place now, and that is yielding some good information, you know, that helps us understand as an organization if we have areas of weakness or vulnerability that we need to clamp down on so that we can make sure we keep our staff here.
And that's all voluntary, that's, that's not, obviously not mandatory.
It's not mandated. I mean, if people have nothing to say, you know, we don't
Sure.
...hook them up to the, never mind.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? Anything, Mr. City Manager?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.